Well, good evening and welcome to the City of Gladstone Planning Commission meeting on February fifteenth at six, I think it's what, six thirty-two P. M. City Recorder Bannick, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Milch. Commissioner Milch, I see you're on here. Can you unmute yourself? Oh, I think we just lost him. I'll come back. Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Poole.
I'm present.
Commissioner Mercero. Commissioner Mercero. Can you unmute yourself?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Volbada.
Present.
Did I get that correct?
You did.
Thank you. And Chair Smith.
Present.
And let me hold tight for just a moment. I'm gonna let Commissioner Milch in. Commissioner Milch, are you there? Commissioner Milch, can you unmute yourself? He appears to be having some issues, so we'll keep trying.
Okay. Could we go ahead and do the flag salute now? Could everybody stand for that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic of America.
Stand one.
One. Invisible.
Invisible. Justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna briefly go over what our agenda, our consent agenda is. We need to do the approval of the January sixteen meeting, and then we're gonna get a report from Joy for our monthly planning report. Number three will be the public hearing regarding the construction of the new library. Number four is Planning Commission two thousand and twenty-two work plan. And then number five, update on Gladstone Housing Code initiatives and downtown revitalization efforts. So. Who would like to, do we have any changes or corrections that need to be made to the, to the meeting minutes from January sixteen?
I have none.
Is anybody?
Well, I'll make a motion that we prove the consent agenda as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Poole's second.
Okay. Tammy, could you do a roll call?
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yeah.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The next on the agenda is the monthly report. Joy, would you like to give us an update, please?
Sure. Um, so at, in January, we had one member of the public come to the customer service counter at the lobby of the Planning and Zoning Division of Clackamas County. I responded to forty-seven phone calls and emails and reviewed four building permits that required land use review and held one pre-application conference. I see that there is a typo that I did not attend the January meeting, but you all held one, and I apologize for that. I will get that corrected and back to Tammy. Um, the city council did hold an appeal hearing for Z zero four eight three dash two one. That was the, the conditional use for the church to hold preschool and daycare services up on Glen Echo. They approved the applicant's request to remove the sidewalk from the special conditions of approval. And so they're moving forward with their proposed use as a daycare and preschool to serve a total of about fifty students. The pre-application conference was interesting. It is a potential new building for a cabinet and display. Showroom and so there, it should be a great use of the space if they move forward. And then the building permits included a solar panel, a home renovation, a signed permit, and revisions. Every time they revise their plans for a building permit, it has to come through our office one more time to ensure that the setbacks and the use is still allowed.
Thank you very much, Joy. Thank you. Next item is number three, item number three, and at this point, I need to recuse myself. I've been actively involved in the, the planning of the new library, serving on the library task force and serving on the library board. I don't wanna put our city or citizens in jeopardy with any kind of issues or problems, so I'm recusing myself, and I will let our vice chair Andrel go ahead and chair this portion. However, since I've been very active on it, if there's any questions, if you need, you know, factual answers to whatever issues you're reviewing, since I've been actively involved, perhaps if you need, need any questions answered, I might be able to help you. But at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and exit. Okay, are you ready, Andrel?
I think so. Find out. Channel, channel my inner Michael Milch.
That's right. Okay, good luck, Andrel. Bye-bye.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so tonight's application, or, yeah, tonight, so tonight's testimony, we're gonna be hearing is a quasi-judicial hearing. It's, uh, there will be public testimony for this hearing. It will be called in three groups: testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're a participant online, you can click to raise your hand. The raise hand button at the appropriate time when we recognize your group. If you're a participant via telephone, just dial nine, and that will raise your hand in the meeting platform to recognize you to speak at the appropriate time. We're gonna hear applicant testimony, presentation, and after that, each audience member who's testifying will have three minutes to state their, their opinion, and then we'll also give time for the applicant to rebuttal any information we hear from testimony from the public. So, that said, I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Z zero zero two eight dash two two dash D. This is the approval. Their name? Gladstone Public Library?
That is a fine name. It's the design review application for the library proposed at five twenty-five Portland Avenue.
Okay, that, that's the name. Let's see. All right, so at this time, I'll ask if any commission members wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in the matter before us tonight, or does any commission member wish to report any certificate, ex parte, or pre-hearing contacts? Please indicate if you visited this site in connection with this application. So, I guess I'll go down the line. Commissioner Labonte, you have anything to disclose?
Aside from going by in my normal course of action here in the city, I have no, no issues.
Okay, Commissioner Volbada?
No issues.
Commissioner Milch?
I followed along with some, I attended some of the task force meetings and followed along, but have not probably in the last year or so. And certainly never, just, just to listen, but not to participate in the choices that were made. So, I don't think that that involvement will affect my ability to deal with this application.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes, like all of you, I've, I've visited the site and I'm real familiar with it. I don't have any ex parte contacts, and I intend to participate. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Mercero?
I plan to participate.
All right, and I'm planning to participate too. Any, anybody of the hearing body? Oh, I'm sorry. Is anybody having any issues? Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so there's, do I gotta find out if anybody opposes anybody's position?
Yeah, you should do that.
Okay. Yeah, so is there any, does anybody? Does anybody challenge anybody's ability to participate in this hearing?
If so, please raise your hand as an attendee. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on. Let's see. All right. If you, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If you, if you, if your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later at any appeal. Your comments should state why the applicant should or should not be approved, or in, or include your proposed modification you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any part, party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or ask that the record, record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final event evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statement or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal this decision to the land board, Land Use Board of Appeals based on the particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity, specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes any action for damage in Circuit Court. All right. I'll call for the staff report.
Good evening. So, before you is the title of tonight's application. It's the design review application for five twenty-five Portland Avenue. And it is a public hearing to hear about the proposed library at the corner of Dartmouth and Portland. And to specifically address the exceptions requested by the applicant to review and bring up any concerns about the design review findings and to specifically request an adjustment for the orientation of the front door of the proposed library. And then if anyone would like to hold the, the hearing open or provide more testimony, they can request that at the end. So the proposed project is the construction of a new building located at the corner of Dartmouth Street and Portland Avenue. It is the northeast corner. It has previously been the city hall. In the past, it's also been a fire or fire station and a library. And, but the proposal is to build a new six thousand two hundred square foot building that will include a main reading room, areas designated for teens and younger children, a staff workroom, and a community meeting room that opens up onto Dartmouth that could be used after hours. There is also an exterior courtyard on the, proposed on the north part of the site closest to the Gladstone Fire Department. Looking at the property, there are no known environmental overlays, so there's no floodplain or habitat conservation area that we need to address. The zoning of the property is C two, that is a commercial zone. And it is about zero point two one acres in size. The notice of tonight's hearing was sent to the applicant, the owner of the subject property, and the owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. And the application and notice of the application was also sent to the City of Gladstone, the Public Works Department, the fire contractor, Clackamas Fire, as well as the Police Department, Engineering, and Wes. Comments were received from the Public Works Department jointly with the Engineering Department, and Wes and Fire also provided comments. You will see the zoning map here, and with the parcel identified in the northeast corner of the intersection of Portland and Dartmouth. Libraries and community service facilities are identified as a use allowed outright in the C two zoning district. Therefore, it is not a special use, and there are no key findings related to the, to a special use, because it is allowed outright. The dimensional standards of the C two zoning district are that there are no minimum setbacks. There is a maximum setback along Portland Avenue that is met by the application, by the applicant using structural components of the awning and the building to go up to five feet from Portland Avenue. Off-street parking is usually required. However, there is an exception to off-street parking if a community service facility or civic use is, that is allowed outright, is substituted for another community service facility or civic use on the same property, whether it's in the same building or a new building, as long as the total lot coverage is not expanded by more than ten percent of the lot coverage of the prior building on the property. In that case, no more off-street parking shall be required than was possessed by the previous facility or use. The library is a community service facility, and it's proposed to be six thousand two hundred square feet in size. The applicant provided that the previous use, the city hall, covered about ninety-five percent of the lot based on visits to the previous city hall. I would say that is accurate. And it, the old building covered the majority of the site, which was about eight thousand six hundred and ninety square feet. And so because the old use was actually larger and had more lot coverage than the proposed footprint of the library, no additional off-street parking is required. The maximum height in the C two zoning district is thirty-five feet. And the applicant provided that the maximum height of this building is about twenty-two feet, so it, there is no concern with the height. Equipment setbacks are supposed to be ten feet from residential zoning districts unless it's up on the roof, and, and they are set back from the residential zoning districts. Looking at the zoning map, the adjacent properties on all sides also have the C two zoning designation, but there is a multifamily residential development to the west. And so although it's not zoned residential, it is still a residential use that needs to be considered when looking at equipment and potential noise and impacts. And there is no residential use proposed, and it is not a hotel, so the other sections of the C two zoning dimensional standards are not applicable. The applicant is requesting an exception to the maximum fence height. You'll see in item number seven of seventeen point one eight point zero six zero, there, an exception may be granted to the maximum fence or wall height standards pursuant to the review of an application for a conditional use, alteration, expansion, or a change of use of a non-conforming use or a design review. Well, we are here tonight for a design review application, and so the applicant is within their right to request an exception, and you can grant an exception to the wall height and fence height if you so choose after hearing the evidence of the applicant and the application materials. And so in front of you on this slide, there is the the fence that is proposed is architectural metal panel that creates a continuation of a wall for the courtyard. On the image, are you able to see my, my cursor? Okay, on the image, you'll see this dotted line. This is the outline of the fire station building. You'll see that the courtyard, which expands all this distance, has a natural barrier with the existing fire station building, and then there is a break where the parking lot is. The applicant is proposing to use an architectural metal panel screen to create a barrier between the parking lot and the courtyard, both for visual as well as noise. The exception is needed because they're proposing for this architectural metal panel to be eleven feet tall, which exceeds the six-foot height limit for fences and walls in the Gladstone code. So if the Planning Commission wishes to grant them an exception under this section seventeen point eighteen point oh six oh seven, that will need to be specified. All design review applications are reviewed against Division for Developmental Standards of the Gladstone Municipal Code that includes the general provisions as well as building, siding, and design, landscaping, off-street parking, and loading. All of these items are addressed in the staff report if they're applicable. And I say if they're applicable because there are no billboards proposed, and there's no wireless communication facility, it is not a special use, and it is not a land division. So there are items within the developmental standards that are not addressed in the staff report. However, the staff report outlines the building, siding, and design with findings about the energy efficiency, the orientation, the height, the light, the wind flow, and the items that are a concern when you have a new structure taking up a large area of a lot. And one of the aspects that you will remember granting an exception to in previous cases is the use of metal. In this case, the applicant is proposing to use metal along the awning, which is allowed without explicit approval from the Planning Commission. They are also proposing to screen the equipment using metal sheets. And landscaping, the applicant is proposing to have fifteen percent of the site landscaped. That includes the courtyard area in the back, along with a landscaping strip along Portland Avenue and Dartmouth. It also includes street trees. And there are existing tree wells on the street, and the applicant is proposing to replace one vacant tree well as well as plant three trees in the tree wells along Portland with this development. As we noted, off-street parking is not required because it is a community service facility replacing a previous community service facility, and it is not covering a larger amount of the lot. And the applicant provides for movement of pedestrians on the sidewalk and in the site through the building and the courtyard, and these are buffered from the roads by parking as well as curb. The applicant did not provide any sign, designs with their application, and so as they move forward, they will have to submit another land use application for a sign. It is reviewed administratively and will be compared to seventeen point five two of the code to ensure that it meets the regulations in the Gladstone Municipal Code. The clear vision requirements are met by having the recessed entryway and having no visible barriers for the traffic turning on Portland or Dartmouth. And the applicant provided information on drainage grading and utilities. This information was reviewed by both the City of Gladstone Public Works as well as the contracted engineer, and they, the proposal meets the, the requirements, and there are special conditions of approval to ensure that as they move through the drainage grading and utilities all meet the city standards. This is a lot of material. I did not go into much detail, so if there are specific questions about any of these items, I'm happy to address them during the discussion. Oh, let Commissioner Poole, I see your, your hand up.
Yeah, just a quick question. I believe the council approved some changes. Was that in regard to the use of the metal? I think at the last meeting, they approved or, or spoke about changes, and was it in regard to using the metal across the front and the metal shielding, or do you happen to know?
Which council are you referring to?
Oh, this, this city ca, I, last, at the city council meeting last week, I got home and I turned it on, and they were just right in, just getting into a discussion of, of, and they authorized a change or something in the library, and I didn't get it. I'm sure it's incorporated here, but I just thought it might be something relevant.
I'm not sure what that was.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you, anyway.
Okay. That's that's the end of your report, Joy.
Um, no.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
It is not. No, that that is fine. That is fine. And the applicant is requesting an adjustment. And the adjustment is needed because the Gladstone Municipal Code requires that the front door along Portland Avenue faces Portland Avenue. And this design, although the entrance vestibule faces both Portland and Dartmouth, the physical door itself actually faces Dartmouth. And so the applicant is proposing or requesting that the planning commission grant an adjustment to allow for that door orientation. And as noted by some of the commission members, and this this project went through a lot of public input and design workshops and provided a lot of opportunities for feedback from the community. And the applicant is proposing that the orientation in this manner provides for the best flow of visitors into the library. And because it's visible from both, it does it it is in design flow with adjacent buildings. It's not illegal. And they're proposing that this is the the minimum remedy for the hardship. This is a very unusual situation because it is a court ordered library. And so they have to use this lot. And they have had ample opportunity for the public to weigh in on the final design. And the final design was actually approved by the city council and the county commissioners. And I'm not sure what the the item was last week, but I'm sure there will be someone who will be able to answer that as you guys have your discussion. Jackie Betts has raised her hand. I'm sure she would be able to answer it. Jackie, let me see if I can. There you go.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to clarify that what what went before the city council at their last meeting was the land lease agreement. So as part of the settlement agreement, the city will allow the county to build the library at the old city hall site. And the county will lease that property for one dollar a year. Prior to that policy decision, Clackamas County was providing a presentation to the city council and the annual library report. And they also updated them on the design review application, but the city council made no decisions regarding that presentation.
Thank you for that clarification, Jackie. That's very helpful.
Commissioner Poole has his hand up again.
Yeah, i- if I may, if we're into the discussion of the of the design, I I think it's an ideal solution with the parking and the potential changes and things that that will happen on Portland Avenue. Who knows how far that will go? But I think in terms of safety and parking and flow, i- it will work fine. It'll have nice south facing. And you know, if you were to build a city hall today, the way it's configured, you'd probably put the city hall front door on Dartmouth Avenue. But yeah, I I just think this is this is certainly something that's reasonable. And I I do support what we're being presented.
Okay, I think there will most likely be the applicant presenting and testimony before they're there you guys go into your discussion. But I I will finalize my presentation and move out of the way so that can happen. So the staff have reviewed the material against the the Gladstone Municipal Code and are requesting or are recommending approval of the design review application with the following special conditions of approval. Landscaping to ensure that the tree species planted in the tree wells are not on the prohibited plant list. There is a special condition of approval that they submit the species to staff to ensure that. Signage, when the time comes for a sign, a sign application is required. Lighting, it was unclear whether the the lighting along Dartmouth was sufficient. And the plans did not include a street light along Dartmouth or information on the lighting around the entrance to the community meeting room. ADA access is a normal special condition of approval to ensure that the ramps in the site are handicap accessible and meet the ADA access requirements a lot. And you'll you've seen it with sidewalks in the past and site development in the past. The water sanitary sewer, storm drainage, and erosion control streets and easements are there to ensure that the city design standards are met and that the utilities are up to par as well as to ensure that the west permits are obtained and that the erosion control is maintained. There is also a requirement that as built submittals be submitted to the the city for their records. And with that, my presentation is over.
So, uh, thank you, Joy. All right, and now we'll call for the applicant's presentation.
Okay, hold tight just a moment.
Tom, did you have a question?
Yes, I did for Joy.
Okay.
And there was two letters, one by the Clackamas Tire District and one by the Water Environment Services that were addressed to you. And they had some fairly important comments, I thought, that needed to be considered
Yes.
or approval.
Yes.
Do you have any comments on that?
They they are incorporated into the special conditions of approval and the notes that you see in the staff report. And the applicant has copies of all of those and are aware of those.
Okay, while you're addressing that, I'm glad that's in there and then we don't have to worry about that. The Public Works and the Fire Department District One, Clackamas District One, both made recommendations for specific approval regarding pipe size, et cetera, et cetera. Is that noted, you know, in the same discussion you were talking about?
Yes, and the pre-application or the pre-construction conference with the city is where the city gets the final plans prior to the construction of the building. And at that time, the requirements of the city as far as the pipe size is verified and documented that it's sufficient. And so at that time, it it's a check. Tonight, we're we're talking about the land use and the land use zoning regulations go back and document that the city design standards have to be met. And so in this land use application, we have special conditions of approval. If you all adopt those special conditions of approval that require the applicant to work with the city to ensure that the pipe sizes and all of the the specifications meet the those standards.
Okay, thanks very much. If that that's one of my main questions in that if we recommend approval of the design review, those will be considered. We don't have to add that to the motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome applicants. Please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the planning commission. I am Mitzi Olson, Library Director of the Gladstone Oak Lodge Libraries. Our citizens have dreamed of and waited for this new library for a long time. Our current library building is close to sixty years old with ADA challenges and structural issues that severely limit its appeal and usefulness to the community. The new modern library will be an inclusive, welcoming resource, a resource that enhances individual and community life by offering gathering space and free open access to programs and services that help meet the diverse and evolving educational, recreational, cultural, and informational needs of the citizens of Gladstone. We have had significant community involvement in the design process. Members of the task force helped to select the design team led by Opsys. The Gladstone Task Force has been meeting since January two thousand nineteen. The members unanimously voted to recommend the BCC accept the master plan and also approved value engineered changes to align the the project budget. We are excited to make the dream of a new facility a reality and are happy to be here tonight to present the plans for the new Gladstone Library.
Right.
Do we have Sina in the room?
Yes, um, thank you, Mitzi. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Joy. Um, I am Sina Meyer. I'm with Opsys Architecture. I'm the project architect. And then we also have Liz Manzer, Jim Kowalich on our team and some of our consultants here as well, if any questions come up specifically civil. If I may share my screen, I have a few additional views that I would love to share with this group, especially of the exterior, to give you a better sense of what the future library will look like. So I think I have permission to share, so I will go ahead and do that. And then if somebody could verbally confirm that you all can see my screen, that would be helpful. Are you seeing the site plan up on my screen? Perfect.
I am.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I I'm not going to spend too much time on the plans since Joy gave such a great introduction to the project. I just want to orient you before we jump into these 3D views so that you know what we are looking at. Obviously, we're looking at Dartmouth here, if you can see my cursor. And then Portland on plan south, you can see the courtyard. You can see the entry vestibule and you can see the stepped back entry of the meeting room. I will also share a view, let me click here, there we go, of the spaces within the building, just to give you a better sense of flow and approach and how the spaces are laid out on the interior and how they relate to the exterior that you've seen in the elevation that we provided. You can see the vestibule here facing out onto Dartmouth, but really addressing this whole corner as an entryway. As you've seen in the images, there's a lot of glass, especially along this edge as well as along here into the main reading room area. You see the spaces that Joy pointed out that are specifically designed for teens and then also for the children, for younger children up here. And then in here is kind of our back of house. We have restrooms. We have small meeting spaces, an office for the staff, and then a staff workroom as well. And then this is really our big open space. This is the collection, computers area, study area, and there's some seating along here. And you'll see in the images that I will show that there's a lot of glazing here to really create a sense of this indoor-outdoor relationship that exists between the building and then this courtyard right here. And I'll also share a view, a rendered view, maybe I'll go there next, of what this courtyard will look like. So just to orient you, this is the reading room. This is a door leading out into the courtyard from the main reading room. This is the children's area that you saw. There's also a door coming out into this courtyard from the children's area. And then this is the existing fire station right here. So along this edge, as Joy pointed out, we have this architectural fence or a garden wall, as we're referring to it, that is denser here to create this kind of barrier, visual separation between the parking lot and the courtyard that is really kind of a quiet space, a refuge. And then the spacing of these, these are metal fins, kind of lightens up and the fence kind of transforms into a trellis element for plants to grow up to address this kind of fire station wall that we'll be looking at from the courtyard. Some of the other features that you're seeing on here are landscape boulders for seating. And then we have a wooden bench that provides a seating opportunity for a larger group right here. And then this path kind of leads from one door to the other. It connects these sort of smaller eddies. And it's just a scored concrete path. And then you see landscaped areas sort of surrounding the courtyard. We have a few taller trees in here as well. These are the elevations that you were looking at. There's just a few things that I will point out and then we'll get into the rendered material. As Joy had mentioned, this is our rooftop mechanical equipment that we have screened all the way around with a metal panel enclosure. This material here that you see right here and right here, this is a painted fiber cement plank siding. We'll have some precedent images for you to look at as well. What you're looking at here, this is, in here is the large community space. So we'll show you some views of what that looks like. This is the south elevation and the west elevation that shows the sunscreen. We actually have, since we submitted this material, developed the screen quite a bit, so we're excited to show you what it looks like now. But what we are studying right here is a series of bent and perforated metal panels that sit within this frame that is held off the building. So it really performs as a sun shading device for the reading room to provide glare and heat gain, but it also is kind of a place making tool. It really provides an identity for the library. Um, let me go into this image, and this was submitted as part of the application material as well. And again, these are just precedent images from other projects that we look to for inspiration. This is an image that shows a perforated metal panel similar to what we are studying. This image here actually shows color, and that's something that we're in the process of studying as well. This is the fiber cement siding, the plank siding that I was referring to that will have on the building. It will be painted. We'll have some profiled metal panel as well with varying width. And we'll have some soft fit material as well. So this is the overall just 3D perspective to kind of situate you. This is Dartmouth right here. And then this is Portland. You see back here the fire station. We have a fire engine in here. And then this is the residential property here to the east. In this view, you can really get a sense of the presence of the sunscreen kind of reaching out as this inviting element off of the entry. You can also see the screened mechanical enclosure and how it's set back from both roof edges. And you can get a glimpse of the courtyard back here and that screening element. And I have a better view of that that I'll show you of what that does and how it helps us create this kind of enclosure for the courtyard. It really ties in with the language that we are establishing here along this edge. And so that we're picking up that language back here. This is an updated view of the of the vestibule. We're kind of standing in the intersection. So we're kind of looking down both Portland and Dartmouth. So you can see how open this vestibule is. And even though the doors are opening to Dartmouth, the gesture is really towards the corner. You can also see some of these folder elements that kind of are sprinkled in along the landscaped areas off of both streets. And then again, as you saw in the courtyard, we have similar seating opportunities there. A few words about the sunscreen here as well. You see these columns touching down. These are steel columns that support a structural truss that supports our roof overhang as well as the sunscreen. So those are the elements that you see behind the perforated panel. In this, excuse me, in this volume right here, this is our workroom, the staff workroom, so there's a window into the workroom. And then this is where our back of house area is right there. And then this back here is where the public entry is to the And then this back here is where the public entry is to the large meeting room that will be available for after hour events. This is the same view, except now we kind of shift the door and we're looking at it sort of straight ahead from Dartmouth. So you can see the entry vestibule, our book drop is located right there. You get that kind of landscaped area wrapping around, coming into the entry and a seating opportunity right there. And then you can get a glimpse of that overhang that we are providing at the large meeting room. There's opportunity for artwork, for public art right there. Both of these areas will be well lit, we have overhead lighting and there's also lighting within that screened element. This is a view coming down Portland. You can see the sunscreen, again, this truss element in the back. We talked about signage and that is something that we are still studying. This is showing an option where the signage exists within this sunscreen element. There's opportunity for color, so this shows it being integrated right here into the metal panel language. You see the landscaping right here, this is the teens volume right here. And then what you're seeing right here is a trash enclosure. There is a trash enclosure currently on the site, it's just a chain link trash enclosure, it's a shared facility. It's for the fire department, we are proposing that we are rebuilding the trash enclosure and it will be a shared facility for the fire department as well as for the library. It'll be in the same location, it will just be a different material. What we are proposing is a metal panel, simple metal panel screen. It also houses the generator that serves the fire department. And then this is our last view, you can see again the sunscreen. There's windows off of the courtyard into the main reading area. You can see the trash enclosure and then you can also see this screening element into the courtyard area. So this is the parking lot, you can see we're very close and in order to provide kind of a calmer and quieter environment, we are hoping to provide a little bit more screening for that area. This is also our perimeter and so for security, we are really needing to kind of close off that area to to secure the perimeter of the building. And I believe that's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to stay on and answer any questions if anything comes up.
Okay, thank you. Just working down the agenda here, so it says public testimony at this time. So I'll keep working. Here are guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is acceptable to state that you agree with their statements of the previous speaker, even if that's all you have to say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of the proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email the materials to Tammy Bennet. and the staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. If you do not wish to speak but do want to submit written testimony, you may also email that to Tammy Bennet. As a reminder, testimony for the public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony for, opposed and neutral. If you are participating online, please click the raised hand button at the appropriate time to be recognized. If you're on the phone, please dial nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. So at this time, I will go ahead and call for testimony in favor of the proposal.
I currently do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Then I'll call for testimony against the proposal.
Again, I see no hands raised.
All right, and I'll call for a neutral testimony at this time.
No hands are raised.
Great, all right, so now the next item on here is staff recap and recommendation.
I am here. I silenced my video so that I could deal with unstable internet connection. But I am here and as a recap, staff are recommending approval of the design review application, including the exception to the fence height as allowed in the C2 zoning district and the requested adjustment of the door orientation with the 14 special conditions of approval.
Okay. The next item is applicant has an opportunity to say anything or maybe members of the commission might have some additional questions at this time.
I show Les Poole's hand is up.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, Commissioner Poole.
Yeah, I got a little ahead of myself earlier about the door orientation, but wanted to reiterate that I think that that's very reasonable and frankly is safer and when one looks at the possibility of having the access in the front, it just, or I should say facing Portland Avenue, it does raise some issues. And I think the ambiance of the building is well served by making an exception and allowing the main entrance to face Dartmouth Street. I had a couple other questions. One is, first of all, the engineering diagrams and designs are very well done. My compliments, they don't look vague or uncertain. I'm a little concerned about how the possibility of glare and reflection off the sun shielding and the metal on the building and the fact that we're going with more and more LED lighting in the area. So in the diagrams and in the packet, I know it's hard to describe, well, what's it going to look like with glare? But I've just got some concerns about how that afternoon sun is going to bounce off of the Portland side of that building. Could, I know we're probably looking at matte colors, etc., but what reassurances do we have that we're not going to run into issues there with glare or reflection off of the side of the building, but really that faces Portland Avenue and faces the afternoon and evening sun?
Thank you Commissioner Poole, that's definitely something that we can study as we are looking at different finishes of this sunscreen. I really appreciate the comment and that's definitely something to take into consideration.
Okay. We, applicant, you have anything else you'd like to add at the moment?
I don't myself, I don't know if there's anybody else on my team who would like to raise a hand and add a comment?
I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, so the next item is, oh, go ahead Commissioner Milch.
Regarding the two exceptions in the in the design review, I appreciate the drawings submitted by the applicant showing the fence off the courtyard area. I think that with the height of the vehicles at the fire department and the relative height of the rest of the building and the surrounding area, an 11 foot fence is far superior to the normally allowed six foot fence. So I would support that exception. And also for many of the same reasons that Commissioner Poole has mentioned, I would support the orientation of the front door toward Dartmouth Avenue as well. The third condition that I thought there was some issue with in the staff report had to do with the lighting in the area of the the public community meeting room at the at the east end of the building on Dartmouth Avenue. I would just hope that the applicant would take into consideration providing sufficient lighting on the building itself so that if people come in to use that building after hours, it's well lit for unlocking the doors and getting in and out safely by the public. That's one of the, one of the issues really with a lot of the buildings along Portland Avenue in our commercial districts, street lighting isn't always sufficient to provide comfortable, safe lighting for people who are entering businesses in the evening hours, especially during the winter time. And I wish that more of our commercial buildings along Portland Avenue had good lighting built into them to light the area. But I hope that the library can lead the way in doing this, particularly with that room since it's designed to be used later than the rest of the library.
Thank you Commissioner, I appreciate the feedback. And yes, we are lighting, especially the entry areas will have lighting on the building itself to provide lighting for those two entries.
Okay. So the agenda here is the next couple items is close the public hearing and then discussion. Do we feel like we want, do we want to close the public hearing? If so, I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
All right, proposed by Commissioner Mercero, seconded by Commissioner Milch. So the public hearing is closed at 7:30, 34 PM. All right, so now I'll call for a discussion from the hearing body. Anybody like to start? All right, I guess I'll just start by saying I do agree with Commissioner Milch and Commissioner Poole. They having the door, the orientation of the door is perfectly acceptable. It's a safe, safe environment for people accessing the building at any time of the day. Makes sense that they would have the heightened fence on that fire station side, especially when they pull out of there with those sirens blaring. Definitely want to try to block some of that sound coming through there. The only thing I always wonder is how you're going to get them lawnmower in there? But anyways, I'll digress. Anybody else have anything?
Commissioner Langston, our city attorney has his hand up.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Commissioner Langston, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. Sorry to interrupt, because you took a motion and it was seconded to close the hearing, you should actually vote on that motion to formally close the hearing.
Yep, understood. All right. Tammy, can you do roll call? Oh, I gotta take a, I'm sorry, so make a motion to close the hearing?
So we have a motion on the table, Commissioner Mercero made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Milch to close a public hearing. I'll now do a roll call, Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
All right. Okay. So should be stated that it's now 7:36 PM? Right. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for keeping me on track, first time. All right, so again, I will
I do show a couple of hands up by Commissioner Labonte and Commissioner Poole.
We'll start with Commissioner Labonte.
I thank you, and I guess my one question is regarding that fence and I guess your comment, Mr. Langston, is that fence designed anyway for sound barriers? Is that mostly just for, I guess, privacy?
It's mainly visual screening, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Was it, I guess, if I may ask, was there much of a conversation about that as something that came up to be important at all or?
Acoustics are definitely important because we do envision the space being used for reading. So it's definitely something we can study further. But for us, the main concern was the visual screening from the fire station.
And in the design process, would a more sound, I guess, proof fence be a huge expense necessarily in the overall plan? If we were to have a soundproof fence there?
We would need to look at it and we don't want something that's just opaque. We want a bit of movement, so we want a bit of transparency. We don't want to just turn our backs to the fire station either. So we would have to kind of balance the two, the two needs for being a visual barrier, an acoustical barrier, but still being inviting. And so that's something we would have to study. And you're right, cost is an implication as well.
I appreciate design, I think it's great and I just could imagine that being a concern further down the road and people
Excuse me, everybody, I'm sorry, this is Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office again. So since the record is closed, we shouldn't really be having a back and forth with the applicant. I must use procedural questions that you can ask of staff, but the record's closed, so we should really shouldn't be talking about additional information. If you do have questions, it's absolutely fine to take another motion to reopen the record and have that conversation. But until you do that, you really shouldn't have this kind of back and forth, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Commissioner Poole? You're muted, Les.
I had, I had two thoughts and comments. One of them, Commissioner Labonte just addressed, and that was the fence. I was hoping the fence materials could be something as well attractive as possible, which I'm sure they will be, but when you get 11 foot high anything in there, the cost is going to be prohibitive probably to build what would be a sound barrier or a sound wall. I would support that, but I don't, I, you know, I wouldn't go so far as to make a motion or or expect the fence to become a wall. And when it becomes an 11 foot high wall, we get into all kinds of engineering. So I do support doing anything we can to make the fence as, you know, sound barrier or solid as possible and still serve the purpose. I had one other thought, and that is we, we all understand that while an accommodation has been made and this facility is replacing another public facility, so we're not going to address the parking in terms of what would normally be required. This would be maybe a question for staff, but do we need to include something about the parking management or parking plan or or how we'll address the parking in this? Or do we, are we in a point where the parking is going to be what it is? I'm not suggesting that we revisit parking, but I'm curious if some type of a plan shouldn't be included in the, in the approval.
Les, it is my recollection that the downtown revitalization plan that the planning commission is going to be reviewing this year and potentially making movement on includes a desire to have a parking management in the entire downtown area. And it, the application provided for the application provided for the library did not include parking management. And because of that exception for a required, for no additional off-street parking being required in the C two zoning district, staff did not make a special condition of approval for a parking management plan, but that is something that you can consider for that one piece of property. There was a traffic analysis included in the application that identified that it was not anticipated to have more traffic visiting this library than the existing library down there. And that the impact to the roads and the parking would be limited.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Mercero, still have a question?
Well, I was gonna talk about that, that acoustical concern, which I'm assuming is on the south side. It's adjacent to the fire department.
The north side.
That's the north side, I think.
Okay, the north side then is with the windows?
The windows, I think, are on the west side, like the entrance side?
The courtyard, the courtyard does have windows into the library as seen in the application materials.
I was going to just suggest that the windows on the specifics noise or concerns can be made out of plastic that are very, very acoustical. They're a little bit more expensive than glass, but they're bulletproof. They do help get rid of the sound.
All right. Anybody else have, any commissioners have any additional items they want to discuss regarding that design review? Everybody feels pretty good? Perfect. All right. Then I will entertain a motion on a decision on this design review matter.
I have no problem making a motion. This is Mercero.
And what is the motion?
Yeah.
I have no problem making a motion for the planning commission recommends approval of the design review application Z zero zero two eight dash two two dash twelve.
With the special conditions?
And the special conditions would be the sunscreen concerns be taken into consideration. And the, we have adequate lighting in the outside of the community room.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was referring to the conditional exception. On the the door location and the height of the fence.
I believe that, I believe that the recommendation is, you should now all be able to see the recommendation.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Mercero, was this the recommendation that you're wanting to recommend?
I have no problem recommending that. It's it's in the discussion. I don't know if it was written down yet, but I I certainly agree with it.
So if this is Chad again from the City Attorney's Office, Commissioner Mercero, if it's easier, perhaps you could just say I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation as shown on the screen.
Okay, this is Thomas Mercero, I make a recommendation to prove the recommendation made and show it on the screen.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Mercero and seconded by Commissioner Volbada. Do I need to make, do we?
I'll do a roll call at this point. Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. So I think that concludes this matter. All right, appreciate our applicants being here and and every, and yeah, providing the plan for us and we look forward to seeing this beautiful building, building down there.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Smith, please take over.
I'm here. I'm trying to get back to my gallery view. For some reason or other, it's not doing it. That's okay. Let's go on to it's item number four. The Gladstone Planning Commission work plan objectives. So everybody here.
Yep, I was just going to say before you is the current work plan that we had for twenty twenty-one.
Okay, whoops. There we go. I'm sorry, I screwed up. Go ahead and do that again, Tammy.
I was just saying presented before the planning commission tonight is the current twenty twenty-one work plan that the commission had approved for twenty twenty-one.
Okay. And.
At the beginning of each, at the beginning of each year, it is a each of the commission's boards and committees are to consider work plans. This is the one from twenty twenty-one. And so this is presented before the planning commission for your review and approval to continue on for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, now I see up here that we have numbers one through five to score. Do you want us to actually score how we felt we did for twenty twenty-one or just focus on moving towards twenty twenty-two?
That is up to the commission.
What would the commission like to do? Would you like just to discuss where we feel we're at on each of these items so far with the? We've made some progress on some of these. We still have more work ahead of us, but what would the commissioners prefer to do? Can I have some input, please?
Yep, I'll agree that these definitely, they're not fully completed and wrapped up. So I would be in more than, in favor to just roll these into our two thousand twenty-two plan.
Okay, I agree with you on that. Input from anyone else, please?
Yeah, I would just, Commissioner Poole, I would agree with the chair and Commissioner Langston. I think we know where we're at, and we've had so much material go by in the last year, year and a half that I think we can not get, spend too much time revisiting the twenty twenty-one. I think we should really focus on where do we go from here?
Okay. I do know. Tammy Manick, do you know or have a date when we're going to have the committee that's working on revising the codes? Do you know how close we are to them having them semi sort of in a draft format for us to review? Or do we have a scheduled work session coming up to sit down and review them?
There's a calendar outline on the last page, I believe.
Yes, your item number five is dealing with the update on the housing code.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you, Andrel. Okay, does anybody have any suggestions or additions they might want to see? I see Andrew has a comment.
Well, it was in regards to the the meeting. I received two emails that had different dates for the meeting in April, one for the sixteenth and one for the nineteenth. I was trying to get some clarification on which date that would be for the March meeting. If anybody.
That'll be, that's our agenda item five. We'll, we'll get.
Okay, we'll get, all right. It came up. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody, like I said, does anybody have any additions or questions they might want to ask regarding our work plan objectives?
This is Commissioner Milch. One other thing about the accessory dwelling unit code requirements, I think that are pretty much will be incorporated into the work done on the housing code audit. We addressed a couple of them very early in the year before that process started. But I I think the agreement was last year that we really wanted to not try to do that independently of the other code changes regarding housing. But that that really is best incorporated into that total project. So I I think we can remove it as an individual goal or objective for the year and trust that the code audit committee will make that part of their mission. And again, the transportation parking management, I'm glad that came up in the discussion tonight. The applicant for the library, you know, the application for the library indicated that that having the park, the on-street parking outside the library would be comparable to the number of spaces that we have outside our current library. And for that reason, you know, it's a pretty even exchange. But we know that if you look at the library in the context of the total downtown, that's going to create more need for a very well-focused traffic management strategy. And so that's an important goal to continue, and I'm glad that that's on there and it will be doing it in the light of the downtown revitalization work and the construction of the new library. So I'm glad to see those last three goals or objectives continued as as goals for twenty twenty-two.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else I'd like to add or discuss?
Yeah, Commissioner Poole here. It's an, it's an, it's it's related to the the transportation and downtown plan, and it's just a general comment. It's hard to say if and when a bridge will be constructed over Clackamas River for pedestrians and bikes. But we have the trolley trail that comes all the way down to Glen Echo, where officially the the trolley trail park ends. But the old alignment certainly has a paved trail down Abernathy to Portland Avenue. And I think we need to give more credence to what happens when the trolley trail, the bikers, the walkers, you name it. When it, where it hits Portland Avenue, it hits by the senior center. And basically, at that point, the 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 traffic spills onto the street and the sidewalks. So I I think more of a focus on, you know, not walkability as much as consideration for the trolley trail and how to integrate it into our downtown traffic, I think should be added to the list. I really do.
Commissioner Poole, I'm wondering if that wouldn't be more related to the downtown revitalization? Could I get any input from staff on that? I don't know that there, I don't know if that's going to be separate from the downtown revitalization is what I was trying to say.
I I am not sure. I hope that that would be addressed in the next item on your agenda, but because you're talking about potentially adding something to your work plan, I will let Jackie or Tammy address that question.
Okay, I would assume that it would be a part of the downtown revitalization and would be figured in at the same time, but I I would welcome any input from anybody else on that.
I would say what Joy had just said, yes.
Okay, if we don't have any more questions or discussion on this item, let's move to our last item, which is number five, update on our housing code initiatives and downtown revitalization efforts.
Just, I just want to clarify, so for our planning objectives, we're eliminating number one because it's kind of incompetent, incompetent part of number two.
One and two should be the same. Yeah, they should be together.
And so our objectives for twenty twenty-two would just be basically two, three, and four. Realign them as one, two, and three.
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, do we have to vote on that for approval?
I don't believe so, do we?
I don't believe so. I think I can, I can update our twenty twenty-two work plan to include that.
Perfect.
Thank you. I don't know that I need to read these dates aloud. I think everyone has them in front of them. We just need to make sure that we have them on our calendar and we're present for the meetings. Will there be meeting updates or things on the calendar, the city calendar, that we can click on the links for the Zoom meetings?
We will certainly keep all planning commissioners apprised of all of the meetings. We're just trying to give you an idea to mark down the March fifteenth and the April sixteenth. That will probably involve planning commission. There will be other dates that we'll send out as well that you may want to listen in on. But those are the main two that are highlighted for the planning commission to hold those dates available.
March fifteenth and what was the other one?
March fifteenth and April sixteenth.
April sixteenth, okay, great. Excellent.
To my comment earlier, I did receive an email from the city administrator about some dates, and I believe one of them was for March nineteenth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm being corrected. It is April the nineteenth, not April the sixteenth, because April the sixteenth is a Saturday and April nineteenth is a Tuesday. So thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, guys.
April nineteenth, perfect. I'm marking it down right now. Excellent.
Is the webinar, that's that's outreach meeting for that that webinar on the twenty-first, that outreach for the public, sorry.
So anything that is listed on there, if it's a webinar, we will certainly forward that information on to you as well as the public.
Okay.
Excellent.
And I have a question. This is Commissioner Milch. Regarding the webinars and the public input for this process, since we're talking about ultimately having legislative action on this, not land use action, I believe it would be appropriate for planning commissioners to participate in that. This is not a situation where it's an ex parte communication because of a land use application. This is something where listening to the public, hearing the input, especially in a webinar situation or coming from a public poll or an online poll would be useful to us. So rather than removing yourself from this and waiting until it comes to us, this is something where if you have the opportunity, be there, listen, hear the comments and know the public's feelings about this when we get, by the time we get to the place to act upon it and make recommendations for changes in the code itself.
That's an excellent recommendation, Commissioner Milch. I appreciate that. If there isn't any more input or discussion on this, I would like to move from, move to business from the audience or public. Is there any this evening, Tammy?
I have received no requests for speaking at tonight's meeting.
Okay, I would like to move on to business from the planning commission. Let's start with you, Andrel.
I don't have any business to discuss today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Milch?
No additional business. It's very exciting to see the progress being made on the library project. No additional business. It's very exciting to see the progress being made on the library project. As I mentioned earlier, I participated in some of the community planning and in the early stages of this design and it's been great to see it working through. And you know, the ideas of a group of people sitting together around tables in a room translated into real drawings for a real building is very exciting. And I hope it's equally exciting for the members of the public who've participated all the way along. So this is good. It will mean. Good things for our downtown, including the. You know, the local economy as as it becomes a real attractive destination on Portland Avenue. So. This is very exciting and I'm glad to have been a part of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Milch. Commissioner Labonte, do you have any business you'd like to share?
Yeah, if I. Well, certainly excited to the idea of the line. I think my son was like four when this the conversation first started and. You know, I'm happy that we'll get the library before he graduates college, which would be great. This is good. Children's room won't be so much fun for him, but that's all right. He's moving on. But if I just, you know, as a member of the traffic safety advisory board, I'd like to just take a moment to kind of. Give you a heads up best what's happening on that board if if that is okay. Some things that are happening around the city with traffic. Safety one there, we have been told that there'll be a rapid flashing beacon installed on the corner of Webster and Kason. Near the nature park. I know folks in that area are pretty excited about improving pedestrian safety in that area. We had a lot of community input. A lot of that input was around rapid flashing beacons, making it a little safer for folks to cross, at least having a way to cross. Including a lot of the churches and. Large facilities that that are out there. The another part of that conversation that comes up and one of the concerns and a lot of the letters that we received is the the speed, the idea of speed reduction on Webster and Oakfield. This is something that the traffic safety advisory board is is really, you know, moving kind of move move along. We find it to be an inexpensive way to maybe help. Remedy some of the pedestrian and bicycle traffic issues on Webster and Oakfield. We are, you know, the board is mindful of the expense of these projects, which I think in total, the traffic safety plan is like over nine million dollars to like do everything. And that was in two thousand seventeen. So who now knows now? So we really do try to identify the the lower priced items that will have kind of not so much mass appeal, but have the greater good. And we do focus on faster roads, which would be Oakfield and Webster. So I look forward to hopefully seeing some movement with the city on speed reduction on those roads. The there's been some folks who are living in some of the neighborhoods on Exeter and Fairfield and there's some issues with with drivers going through some of those roads where there are no sidewalks, they're narrow. So I think that's something that you might see from the public, at least the city will hear. Different ideas on how to try to make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly or. Relieve some of the traffic going through, especially during school pickup hours. Some neat remedies that could be there. A lot of folks want stop signs. I know that's probably not going to happen unless there's very specific. There's a very specific protocol for that, but there are some interesting ideas that have come up, including maybe. Blocking traffic at Oakfield on Webster, rather on Exeter and Fairfield, similar to down on ninety nine in Exeter and Fairfield. So some interesting things that we're looking forward to there. Regarding our conversation about Glen Echo and the preschool there. My understanding and listening and reading through the minutes of the work session of the city council that. It's my understanding that the Department of Public Works and please correct me if I'm wrong, anybody. Said that it might be possible to do the twenty mile per hour speed limit in that area. That's something that if the city wants to move forward with, they can. Again, please correct me if I'm wrong with that, but. It seems like we've got some 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 movement there. So that's good news. Thank you very much for your work on that. Of course, tolling is a question that keeps popping up and you know, those of us that are focused on transportation issues, you know. Have are looking at the head closely, you could say. And again, how much will the cut through be and can we get ahead of some of these problems? If and when tolling comes around. There are some concerns regarding the Meljum Bar entrance. I'm not sure if there's been any movement on that. I know that there's going to there's going to be a Belgium bar work site plan. It's going to be beautiful, but in the short term. Some folks are, I guess you could say disappointed with the entrance way there, the cement block and seems like lack of signage for the the barrier in the middle. And those were. Yeah, those are just a couple of things I wanted to bring to you from the traffic safety board and thank you all very much for your time tonight and and I'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Jenna Jenny, do you have anything that you would like to share with us?
Yeah, just. In reading the design review package, one thing that stood out to me that I was excited to see considering where we are with. Lead time issues is that they're already paying attention to that with with noting early procurement, because that's something that I would be concerned about with starting construction and then having. Nothing happening for a few months while waiting for all of these metal and storefronts, which are are definitely things that are. An issue in the industry right now. So I appreciate the fact that they're already on top of that. And really excited to see this come to fruition. I think it'll be a beautiful addition.
I do too. Thank. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business that you'd like to share with us?
I would just like to lend the same comments as most of you feel. I've been with the planning commissioner council for many years. The the Gladstone Library has been the top subject for many years. And to finally get to the design review. And basically get approval of that. I'm very happy. I think that the planning commission should be happy also. And the council for that matter.
Is that all, Commissioner? Commissioner Poole, please.
You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. If we had three hours, we could have a long discussion about tolling and the impacts, but we'll have to save that for another day. I do want to say that. I I think we made a good choice and I really appreciate that. Natalie Smith stepped up and ran for chair and was elected. Tonight, you saw her recuse herself from a situation in a very professional manner. And that goes a long way with me. You know, when when a person's involved in something. We're we're human and it's easy to say that I'll be objective or all the hard work I've put into something won't influence my decision down the road. And I I think you saw that possibility and so I do appreciate how you handled that and. We're getting there, you know, I don't know everything. I'm not the critic here, but. The the meetings are going well and I want to thank everyone.
Thank you. Is that all, Commissioner Poole?
Yes, I did turn my camera on and it didn't die. The reason I've left my camera is it tends to die, so. I I'm trying it out here again and hopefully in the future you'll you'll be able to see my mug the entire meeting.
Excellent, thank you. I'm last. I just want to thank each and every one of you for doing an excellent job with the public hearing. I am sorry, but I really felt it was important that I do recuse myself because I didn't want there to be any issues to slow down this process. Because I myself have been working on getting a new library since two thousand and ten. So it's been a long time. And I'm I'm grateful and thankful for for you guys go in the distance and taking it home. Thank you very much. Also, I wanted to thank the city. I think everyone probably received something in the mail, a little notebook and some pens and I just want to say thank you. I appreciate that very much. And also, moving forward, I want to try to do my best and I will welcome any inputs. To run very effective and efficient meetings, because I know everyone has family and other things and work the next day. So I'm going to do my best to really streamline and and keep things moving, not at a rapid pace, but be effective and get our job done and have a good time while we're doing it. I have asked a couple of questions from City Recorder Bannick about possibly doing something. You may not think is fun, but I think it's going to be kind of fun. We all live in this city and I don't know about you guys, but when I drive around town, you know, having read those two volumes of code ordinances. And I see code violations all the time. So I'm working with the city to figure out a process. So when we see things that are against code. I'm not sure how we're going to submit that to Chief Smurber, but I thought I'd make it like a contest to see who can, you know. Be active and and submit things that they've seen in the city because we only have one guy doing it and he needs some help every now and then. So. So that was just one of my little suggestions about and not only that, I think it will help educate all of us, especially with the new updates coming. Because if we think it's a violation, but we're not sure, we're going to go to those codes and look it up. And I think that's important because once you read something, I don't know about you, and I forget things and have to reference. You know, going back and looking at the codes, but at least I think it's a way of helping to educate us, especially with new codes coming forward. So on that note, I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion to end our meeting.
Okay, and. Did I hear a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Poole, a second.
Excellent. So at eight thirteen PM, we are adjourning our meeting. Thank you everyone.
Sorry, we need to do a roll call. Sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Milch?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero?
All right.
Commissioner Volbida?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, Andrel. You did a great job. Thanks for thanks for stepping in.
Yep, thanks for bearing with me, everyone.
Bye.
Have a good night.
You're a good one.